All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this village board meeting to order on Monday, August 21st, 2023, and ask if you would all please rise and join the village board in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, would the clerk please call a roll?
Trustee Shirley?
Here.
Trustee Labads?
Here.
Trustee Grassy?
Here.
Trustee Schwingback?
Here.
Trustee Dunnington?
Here.
Trustee Tenalia?
Here.
Trustee Bertucci?
Here.
President Hayes?
Here.
Um, next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have two sets to approve tonight. The first is from the committee of the whole meeting from August 7th, 2023. Any changes or passes? There are motion to approve?
I move to approve the committee of the whole minutes for August 7th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassy, seconded by trustee Labads. Any questions or comments from the board or the audience?
I have to pass. I wasn't.
Are passed by trustee Bertucci. Anything else from the board or the audience seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next are the village board meeting minutes from the same evening, August 7th, 2023. Passed by trustee Bertucci.
Correct.
Any other changes or passes?
Move approval of the village board minutes from August 7th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by trustee Schwingback, seconded by trustee Grassy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next we move on to the approval of the accounts payable, and I call on trustee Bertucci.
I move approval for the warrant register check date dated August 15th, 2023, in the amount of $2,024,367.90.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bertucci, seconded by trustee Schwingback. Any questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
Trustee Grassy?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. There are no recognitions or presentations, so I'll move on to citizens to be heard. These are for items not on the agenda, and I do have one blue card submitted tonight. That's by Don Duffy. And Don, if you're just reminded of our three-minute time limit, if you would, so please come forward.
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Don Duffy, and my family and I have lived in Arlington Heights for 22-plus years, and today I want to talk to you about a very important organization in our community, the Children's Advocacy Center of North and Northwest Cook County, which I've been a board member of since February. This organization is a healing place for children who have survived child abuse. They provide free healing services to children who have experienced abuse, allowing them to process trauma and reclaim their childhoods. They also offer forensic interviews, family support services, and a safe-from-start program for children ages from birth to five years who have experienced violence in their households. They serve 38 communities in North and Northwest Cook County and have three locations, including one here in Arlington Heights. They were established in 1989, and they help, on average, more than 1,000 children and their families each year. Child abuse is a serious problem that affects many children in our society. It can have long-lasting physical, emotional, mental consequences for the victims and their families. That's why we need the organizations like the CAC to help them heal and recover from their trauma. They are a leading resource to empower and heal children and families who have experienced abuse and also prevent violence against children. The CAC has demonstrated its unwavering commitment to the Village of Arlington Heights by assisting 93 cases and providing over 480 hours of support to village residents during the fiscal year of 2023. I'd like to extend a warm thank you to Mayor Hayes as well for his recent proclamation to the CAC in recognition of their 34th anniversary. Thank you. And if anybody wants to learn more about the CAC or support their work, you can visit their website at cachelps.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy, for coming this evening and bringing to the public's attention the great work that the Children's Advocacy Center of Northwest Cook County does. And as you said, I will be recognizing the organization in my office next Tuesday at 4:00. So that's August 29th at 4:00, if anybody would like to attend. Again, recognizing the 34th anniversary of the CAC. So thank you again for coming, and thanks to all the great work that you do on behalf of children in need. All right, is there anyone else in the audience who wish to address the board on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I would close then the citizens-to-be-heard portion of the agenda and move on to old business, and we do have three items to report out tonight from our committee of the whole meeting from earlier this evening. And the first is to be reported out by trustee Schwingback.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move, as I did earlier this evening, to concur in the mayor's appointment of Damian Gilara for appointment to the Environmental Commission, youth member, with a term ending April 30th, 2024.
Seconded by trustee Dunnington.
Yes.
Okay. Motion by trustee Schwingback, seconded by trustee Dunnington. Any questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Damian, if you come forward to the podium, and we'll make it official. So if you just raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye and state your full name.
Aye, Damian Gilara.
Having been appointed to the Youth Commission, should say, having been appointed as the youth member of the Environmental Commission.
Having been appointed to the youth member of the Environmental Commission.
In the Village of Arlington Heights.
In the Village of Arlington Heights.
In the County of Cook.
In the County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office according to the best of my ability.
Of the office according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Damian. We know you will. And Becky, do we need to get this corrected?
I'll take care of it.
Okay. So come forward, if you would, and I'm going to, you're going to have to eventually sign an oath, not this one, with our village clerk, but we'll take care of that at some point. But in the interim, I'm going to present you with the village logo pin, which all of the elected and appointed board members wear as a representative of this community. So please accept that, and thank you for your willingness to serve. We look forward to working with you. So should I just hold on to this, Becky?
That would be fine, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Thanks again, Damian. All right, we do have two other motions to report out tonight regarding liquor licenses that were recommended for approval, and so I would call on trustee Labads.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes. I move now, as I did earlier this evening, to recommend that the village board of trustees recommend to the liquor commissioner the issuance of a Class AA liquor license to High Bar Services, Inc., doing business as Bird's Nest Arlington Heights, located at 11 West Davis Street.
Second.
Motion by trustee Labads, seconded by trustee Grassy. Any questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, congratulations to Bird Nest. We thank you for choosing Arlington Heights as your second location in the Chicagoland area, and we wish you many, many years of success at your new location, which was the former location of Dunton House. And so we very much appreciate you coming to Arlington Heights, and again, good luck to you. And we have one other motion to report out tonight. That was by trustee Grassy.
I move now, as I did earlier this evening, to recommend that the village board of trustees recommend to the liquor commissioner the issuance of a Class E liquor license to Big Anges Eatery Incorporated, doing business as Big Anges Eatery, located at 640 West Northwest Highway.
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassy, seconded by trustee Labads. Any questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Pass.
I'm sorry, it passed by trustee Tenalia because he's recusing himself. So why don't you just state that for the record, Jim, if you would?
Okay. I'm recusing myself tonight because the owners of Big Anges are clients and friends of mine, so we're just avoiding any appearance of impropriety.
All right, thank you. All right, we have voted. Congratulations to Big Anges and continued success in the Village of Arlington Heights. Keep up the great work. Everyone very much appreciates your food, and now you've got an expanded service menu, and so congratulations. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, there is no other new business or old business, and so we'll move on then to the consent agenda. Any members of the board wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Any members of the audience wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? All right, any members of the board wish to vote no or pass on any items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, and entertain a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by trustee Tenalia, seconded by trustee Labads. Roll call.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Grassy?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. So move on then to new business, and we do have two items to report out tonight. The first is a proposed ordinance for the removal of amendments and adapting the appendices to the basic building, plumbing, and fire code. Mr. Recklaus, may I start?
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, we've been in the process of updating our building code to streamline it, make it more consistent with the International Building Code. While we do still have a couple of local amendments tonight, we're recommending approval of an ordinance that would eliminate a couple more of those amendments. It's relatively straightforward. All of the items have been discussed and were approved unanimously at the July 24th, 2023 Building Code Review Board, and I have our Director of Building and Life Safety, George Taurus, and Assistant Building Official Elliot Eldridge here to answer any questions that the board may have.
All right. Questions or comments from the board? George, you want to make any comments? Come forward, if you would.
Yeah, just saying this is very consistent to the base code that not only for the ICC but also the state plumbing code.
Okay, thanks. Anything from the audience on this agenda item? Seeing none, then can we make the motion now? It's an ordinance.
Correct.
We can go ahead and make the motion now?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassy, seconded by trustee Bertucci. Any further questions or comments from the board? Trustee Tenalia?
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. Again, this is, George and his staff are doing an excellent job with, feels Andrew Recklaus's leadership on this, and they are turning this building department around in a lot of good ways. And this is just housekeeping and updating, and, you know, we spent a little bit of time talking about it, but it wasn't really difficult at the Building Code Review Board meeting. Everybody agreed right away. So these are two pretty cut-and-dried details that we can clean up tonight.
All right, thank you, trustee Tenalia. Any further questions or comments from the board or the audience seeing none? We have a motion and a second. It's an ordinance, so roll call.
Trustee Grassy?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. Thank you, George and team, for bringing this forward and getting that done. We have one other item of new business. That's a request for a planned unit development amendment for Arlington Town Square, located at 15 through 189 West Gulf Road. Petitioner is present. Why don't you come forward, if you would, and just introduce yourself and tell us what you're looking to do here.
Hi, my name is Jason Park. I'm the property manager for Arlington Town Square. I'd like to talk, I'd like to discuss the proposed variations that we are requesting. Esteemed board members, fellow citizens, and respected attendees, I stand before you today as a member of the board meeting, an opportunity for us to collectively deliberate on crucial matters that have a profound impact on our community. The proposals we discuss today span a range of topics, each embodying our commitment to thoughtful growth and adaptability. As we delve into these issues, I wish to provide you my insights and reasonings for bringing these matters to the forefront. Let us begin by addressing the proposed variation for Chapter 28, Section 10.4-2, amendment that seeks the permission to provide 308 parking spaces instead of the mandated 386, resulting in a calculated deficit of 78 spaces. I firmly advocate for this modification as it aligns with our community's commitment to sustain urban planning. The building has ample parking and has not seen a parking overfill, as supported by the Parking Survey. By acknowledging an excess of parking can stifle growth and promote efficiency. We demonstrate our forward-thinking approach to fostering a well-balanced urban environment. I also wish to draw your attention to the variation to Chapter 28, Section 6.12-1. This proposal suggests waiving the requirements to provide a traffic study and a parking analysis. This waiver acknowledges that while technical assessments are vital, there are instances where cost and time associated with such studies outweigh their benefits, which we believe applies to the situation. In addition, I would like to discuss the matters related to the variation from Chapter 28, Section 10.8, a proposal that would allow for six bicycle parking spaces instead of the required 41, resulting in a calculated deficit of 35. The variation underscores our community's recognition of the importance of bicycle infrastructure while considering our unique circumstances, with the property being located on two major streets, Gulf and Arlington Heights Road. It demonstrates our commitment to providing alternatives to traditional transportation while being practical in our approach. Equally significant is our advocacy for three special-use permits that have the potential to enrich our community's culinary landscape and cultural diversity. The proposals, the proposed permits seek to pave the way for marbling a Korean barbecue restaurant that would offer an authentic and unique dining experience operated by a seasoned veteran with over 20 years of experience in the field. Next would be Hello Boba, a bubble tea, a unique bubble tea dining experience operated by another seasoned veteran with over 20 years of experience. This would be their second location in Arlington Heights. They already operate a Korean pub. They see that much benefit and potential in the Arlington Heights district. Lastly would be Tules Jul, a national bakery, which has over 100 locations nationwide and over 1,000 globally. As this bakery has over 100 locations in the U.S., we feel their expertise in this respective field would bring an even greater draw to our community's vibrant atmosphere. By granting these special-use permits, it demonstrates your commitment to encouraging entrepreneurship, promoting local businesses, and embracing a vibrant mix of flavors and cultures. In conclusion, I believe that these proposals embody our collective dedication to shaping our community that is both dynamic and pragmatic. Our willingness to adapt to regulations to align with the changes needed for our restaurants, residents, businesses, and visitors is a testament to our community's spirit of innovation and cooperation. By discussing and embracing these amendments, we pave the way for the future that strikes a harmonious balance between tradition and progress. I express my heartfelt appreciation to the esteemed board members for providing this platform for my dialogue and my fellow citizens for the engagement in this crucial discourse. Together, we hold the power to shape our community's journey towards an inclusive future. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
All right, thank you. Mr. Perkins?
Thank you. Good evening. I'll just walk through some of the zoning requests that are being asked for on this property. They're seeking a variation in parking, so for up to 78 spaces less than what is required by code. In 2009, the shopping center did receive a parking variation for 59 spaces, so they're looking to increase that to 78. And the reason for that is that they're proposing three new restaurants in the shopping center that increase the parking demand. They're also requesting a variation from the traffic and parking study that staff supported, and then they're requesting a variation on the bicycle parking that I'll talk about in a moment. So the three restaurants you've heard about, they're proposed in the shopping center. As I mentioned, it is at the southwest corner of Gulf and Arlington Heights Roads. There are no real great bicycle access points to this property at this point in time. We're not recommending a variation, approval of the variation, but just a deferral and to provide some bicycle parking spaces, primarily the six that were referenced. Gulf Road is illustrated on the village's bicycle plan for a regional bike path extension. We don't have a timing of that. It crosses multiple communities. As the board is aware, we've also got other potential development in the area with Tiff Four at the northeast corner of Gulf and Arlington Heights Road, potential mixed use with residential development, and then also some residential development potentially on South Arlington Heights Road. So the characteristics of the development in this corridor could change, and hopefully some of the bicycle and pedestrian access points can improve. And hence the recommendation for the condition that while they only install six bike parking spaces now, if deemed necessary in the future, they would add to that based on demand and the ability to better access the property. We also took a look at the parking. We did ask the petition to provide some parking counts. They provided these back in, I believe, May and June, in three or four days over a two-week period, and the peak demand was between 11 and 1 to 2, ranged in occupancy around 95 to 97 spaces. We also looked at the surveys that were done in 2009 and the peak occupancy around the same time periods, but a little higher demand at that time, around 110 to 120. And then staff did our own observation, both some initial counts this year as well as looking at past aerials, and the peak that was seen was in April of this year with around 118 spaces occupied out of the 308 that are on site. So the, there would be one vacancy in addition to the three restaurants. So we did project that if there's an occupancy of around 120 spaces, you add in the demand from the three restaurants and the vacant space, you could expect a parking occupancy of around 180, 200 spaces, still well within the village code requirements. We looked at the uses on the property. There are some medical uses that are driving that variation. There's a dialysis facility that occupies about 10,000 square feet, probably has a lower demand given the equipment they have in that space. And then the auto supply, O'Reilly's probably has a different, you know, parking demand to typical retail. So we felt that the request was appropriate and would help reoccupy the property. So staff recommended, and the plan commission recommended approval of the request with the conditions that are stipulated here, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Mr. Perkins. Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Bertucci?
So I just wanted to, I'm sorry. I just want to confirm with you that you have read and understand all the conditions?
Yes, I have.
And do you agree to them?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Anybody else? Trustee Dunnington?
Thanks, Mayor. Charles, this is probably more for you, but for the parking requirement, I understand that 47 is a really large amount of parking spaces, but why did we decide, why is the recommendation for six?
We felt six kind of matched the requirement for the three restaurants, so the new parking code has a requirement for each use, and so you add the sum of all the uses in this shopping center, it comes to 47. There's no magic to that number, so the board certainly could, you know, add to that, or it can be added at any time, you know, if there was a demand. And primarily, we would, you know, think initially it would be employees that are, you know, perhaps working in these facilities that would be riding their bikes, and then hopefully later, customers. And that's why we added the condition number three here, that, you know, we can require additional, you know, parking to be added in the future for the bicycles, that is.
So in the future, if there was needed space, how would we determine that we needed more bicycle space?
I think it would be either on a complaint basis or, you know, casual observation. If, you know, anybody went by, noticed and saw there were, you know, bicycles non-in-racks and things like that, or we got requests for additional bike racks, you know, from customers or even, you know, businesses, you know, that had employees that were looking to bike there, then we would follow up and, you know, request the property owner to install additional bike racks at the appropriate locations.
Is it something that we could review after some developments started in the area? Like if there was a timetable for it?
We certainly, we certainly could. I mean, if there was a, you know, bicycle connection, for example, the Gulf Road one, which is, you know, I don't know, there's a timeframe, and it, you know, crosses multiple jurisdictions, but it would provide access to the bike path at Bussy, to go to Bussy Woods. So it would be, you know, an important link if and when that would occur. We certainly can revisit that, and the same with additional development, you know, like the Tiff Four with urban streets, you know, once that gets occupied, I think there could be a demand and a, you know, reason for, you know, people who live in that new development would be looking to, you know, ride their bike instead of getting in their car to go to a business or something like that.
Right, I agree. I think right now it's probably not, you know, as it currently is, a huge, there's a huge demand for a bicycle rack, but hopefully in the future, that's the goal of the whole area, that there will be a need for that. I could definitely see teenagers going to the Boba Tea, and I know there's a nail salon there. That seems like it would be really popular. And I could see families riding their bikes to the bakery that's going to be on the corner. And if there's only six spots in a family of four, that's filling up the bike rack pretty quickly. So I'm just wondering if we're a little short-sighted and only six spots, and that if we need a little bit more, or if we need a plan for when we would review when more space is needed, possibly?
I mean, the other thing we could do is either the board could increase that number now, or, you know, once the businesses are open and stabilize, say, after 12 months, then, you know, we can go and kind of, you know, just observe and see if there's a need to increase at that time.
Yeah, I could definitely see people from the urban street area working in that area, the urban street development, and then hopefully the new development right on the corner as well. So, okay, thank you. Also, I wanted to ask about the store, O'Reilly's. I know that they have a lot of vehicles in the parking lot. Will, are they only parked there, like, after hours?
Yeah, typically those vehicles are used for out-of-delivery services and things like that. We've already begun discussion with that because of the randomness that all those service vehicles have been parked at. We've already allocated around 18 spots for them to use that's in the parking space so that it'll be more uniform and create a more smooth traffic environment in the center.
Okay, great.
Anything further from the board?
Thanks so much.
All right. Trustee Bertucci?
Just so we have it on the table, I'll move approval of the PC number 23-006, an amendment to planned unit development ordinance 09-019 to allow modified parking variation, special-use permits for three restaurants, and the listed variations along with the listed recommended conditions. Manager Recklaus, do you feel that I need to read all those variations and conditions?
Would you recommend it? Attorney Smith? No. No. Trustee, if you just simply incorporate the staff, the conditions as stated in the staff memorandum in your motion, I think that suffices.
Okay. So that's exactly what I'm moving.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bertucci, seconded by trustee Labads. Further questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, congratulations. Good luck to you as the new owners and operators, and we wish you much success with your new tenants and with the shopping center in general. So good luck to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for your time.
All right. We have no other new business, and so we will then move on to the report of the village manager, Mr. Recklaus.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, the coming redevelopment of the Arlington International Racecourse property is going to be complex on many fronts. The project has already garnered legislative interest at the state level with proposed legislation on potential new payment-at-lie-of-taxes tool, changes to Tiff rules, and on even the sharing of future project revenues proposed by various parties. In some cases, the legislation was developed and even proposed formally with little or no input from the village whatsoever. Staff believes that this level activity is going to continue in the coming months and years. Future initiatives, such as the expiration of possible state infrastructure improvements,[1758.86] are also likely for any development of this size. The village has generally good relationships with their area legislators, but they must weigh the needs of many parties involved in the process, not just the village, and moreover, any project of this size is going to demand us working with legislators throughout the region and state. Chicago Bears Football Club, the current owners of the property, and the area school districts have already hired lobbyists to ensure that their interests are represented in Springfield. Staff believes that, given the unique nature and size of this redevelopment project, it's just as important for the village to hire a team to look out for our legislative interests as it was for us to hire our own economic and traffic consultants as we did last fall. We work with the Illinois Municipal League and the Northwest Municipal Conference, as well as our own law firm, L. Red Friedman, to identify potential lobbying teams that we believe could assist us, that would be well-equipped to assist us, and we did receive four different proposals. Those proposals were reviewed by myself, village attorney Patman, and Mayor Hayes. We also personally interviewed representatives of those teams over the past couple of weeks. Based on those interviews, we all came to the same conclusion that we believe that the team of MAC Strategies with their subcontractor GR Consulting was the best fit for what it is we were trying to accomplish, and had the most comprehensive strategy on how to represent the village's interests on this project. We have, we have prepared a resolution and an agreement for your review that would, that would allow us to execute that agreement and begin working with that team immediately, and we would recommend approval of that resolution this evening.
Thanks, Mr. Recklaus, and let me just concur and agree with the village manager's recommendation and comments here this evening. Again, I was part of the team that reviewed the proposals and interviewed the candidates, and they were all very impressive and all had something to offer, but I do think that MAC Strategies had the best overall proposal and plan, and I'm very much looking forward to working with them. As I've said many times over the past two and a half years, I have the utmost confidence in our internal personnel, our internal team, to handle this challenge of the redevelopment of the Arlington Park property. But it's come to a kind of a critical point in the process where we do need some assistance down in Springfield, and that's something we just don't have, and so I think this is a very worthwhile expenditure. Again, it's not a done deal, and we want, just want to make sure that our interests are protected and all of our stakeholders' interests are protected as well, and so that's the rationale behind the retention of a lobbyist, and particularly this lobbyist, to make sure that our interests are protected and to ensure that if this does become a reality, that it results in a net positive for the village of Arlington Heights. And so, again, that's my rationale, and that's, I think, the rationale for this recommendation, and I would wholeheartedly support it. So anything further from the board? Trustee Grassi.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes. I just wanted to mention, I had a number of questions, just especially spending money for this group of people, but my, all of my concerns were, were no longer concerns once I talked with staff, hearing about what went behind this, but especially because it's really about taking care of the benefits of our village and our best interests, as Mayor Hayes said, and I'm in full support of that, so thank you.
Trustee Shirley.
You know, I just want to say for everybody's edification that this is not just about if we get the bears. There is some legislation that's being proposed that could actually hamstring the village on development of that property, even if the bears don't come there. So I think it's important to understand that this is not about us just saying, "We want the bears no matter what" and everything else. There's, there's actually legislation that's been proposed, that's been afoot, that could hamstring us and our ability to develop that property to its fullest, fullest value. So I think that's important to mention to residents out there, that this isn't just us saying, "We want the bears" and, you know, and that's all we want. It's more about protecting our interests.
Right, good point, trustee Shirley. Trustee Lebeds.
Thank you. Manager Recklaus, the, is this expense reimbursable? Like, we, it's my, as I recall, the consulting contracts that we've agreed to, the bears were putting aside monies for us to use, is that...
At this time, we did, we did budget money for additional consulting services, and we're assuming that that's going to be how we pay for it. As things unfold, it may be a conversation we have with them about, you know, relative to the escrow. It's not an expense that we initially anticipated when we created the escrow account, but we haven't had an opportunity to discuss that particular issue just yet with, with the football club.
Okay, that's fine. I am in full support of this.
Thanks. Trustee Bertucci.
Thank you. Just to clarify, Philip Manager Recklaus, on who else has lobbyists down in Springfield? So you had mentioned the Chicago Bears Football Club, and then would other organizations or groups have lobbyists down in Springfield on this particular matter?
Well, the, the area school districts hired a joint lobbying team as well, but a number of the various regional stakeholders are represented with lobbyists. You know, a lot of the interests in construction firms and labor unions and so forth that have been kind of players in the, in the regional discussion are obviously represented, and we just want to make sure that our community is kind of on equal footing and are equally represented, make sure that our interests are heard as well.
Correct, yeah. And, and I agree, obviously, wholeheartedly, we need somebody to be in that arena, number one, who specializes in that, has the time, tools, and talent, so to speak. It would be kind of hard and, and I would say irresponsible to be trying to send our own staff down there to try to figure out how to maneuver the hallways, so to speak. So I think we would be remiss if we didn't do this, and when I say remiss, I mean in the fact of not being the proper stewards for the residents and taxpayers, so I'm in full agreement, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Trustee Schwingback.
Thanks, Mayor. Randy, I didn't talk to you prior to the meeting, I read through everything, and I do understand a little bit about how lobbyists work. I mean, this is a lot of money here. Can you just maybe walk me through what our real expectations are of this lobbyist? I know they're down there and they're looking out for our, our better interests, but for this amount of money, what is going to be some things that we really expect to get out of this?
So there's really three aspects of this that we're looking for. One, to make sure that we're kept abreast of all of the different legislative developments that may impact this site, you know, broadly, again, regardless of, you know, what aspect of it it is. Number two, to help us strategize and, you know, understand those dynamics and develop a strategy to ensure that we can get what we want, and we can talk to all the right people that are able to do that, regardless of who they are. Essentially, we're trying to make as many friends as we possibly can and make sure that as many people as possible understand what our goals are and what our interests are. And then lastly, to help protect and implement those interests in any legislation that comes. And, you know, we fully anticipate, as has already been the case, that, you know, there's not, there's not going to be one piece of legislation, there's going to be a lot of different pieces of legislation that are, you know, coming across the desks of the legislature before this development is over, and so we want to make sure that that's, that's the case. The, the team that's been put together is very robust, there's representatives on both sides of the aisle, people have a lot of experience in the Senate, people have a lot of experience in the House, people that have, that are represented or have represented different aspects of the state geographically, and that's why we're, we're looking at a broader base group, because this is a project that has a lot of regional interest and a lot of regional implications, and we feel that we need to make sure we're covering all our bases with this team.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, and as trustee Shirley said, we really need to be looking at this property as a whole, and, and if there's going to be some, some good expectations and deliverables, I don't have a problem with it. I just, I didn't want to be putting that money out there if, if we don't have some real firm expectations on, on what we want from these folks. So looking through everything, it seems to make a lot of sense, but I, I just really wanted to hear what your thoughts were, so, thank you.
Trustee Dunnington.
Thank you. I wanted to confirm under the term of engagement, it'll be for a one-year term, and then that we could cancel with a 30-day written notice at any point if we decided we didn't want to use their services anymore.
Correct, at any time in that, there, there, no one is guaranteed, you know, work for a year. At any time the village determines that we no longer need them, or we want to go in a different direction, we absolutely can with a 30-day notice.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? We do need a motion.
So I will move approval, and are we calling it a resolution?
Yes.
Move approval of the resolution to take on the consultant agreement with MAC Strategies Group as presented by the village manager.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bertucci, second by trustee Schwingback. Any further questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Lebeds?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
President Hayes.
Yes. All right, thank you. Anything else from the village manager, other than the request for closed session?
Nothing this evening.
Anything from the board under petitions and communications? Seeing none, I go back to the village manager.
Well, Mayor, I would respectfully ask that we enter into closed session per ILCS 120/2C21, discussion of minutes lawfully closed, whether for the purposes of approval of minutes or the semi-annual review of the minutes, and five ILCS 120/2C11, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the village has been filed and is pending before court or administrative tribunal, or when the board finds that an action is probable or imminent.
Right, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassi, second by trustee Lebeds. Roll call.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Lebeds?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
President Hayes.
Yes. We are adjourned into closed session and will not be reporting back out. Thank you all for joining us this evening.